District B, Mr. Charles Bradford.
Here.
District C, Mr. Jay Green.
Yes.
District D, Mr. Derek Green. District E, Mr. Howard Locke.
Here.
We give thanks to you for another opportunity to come and work by your name. We ask that you will bless our decisions, that we will follow your guidance, the greatness of this community. These blessings and others we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
If you drive around Baskerville, see it's not just houses, but commercial buildings the same way. I'm not aware of an actual survey that's been made or count. But if you do do the math, Baskerville had a population in the nineteen eighties of around fifteen thousand five hundred. It has a population now of about eighty-seven hundred. So that's a reduction of about fifteen hundred houses to be unoccupied. If you allow for some houses to be maintained and still usable, it could get that number down to around twelve hundred. So right now, I want to see if we have about twelve hundred houses that are in a disoccupied situation. So, this is a big problem to the western correct, we're about five years behind. But if you think of the problem, it's not just the houses, it's actually a roadblock. People coming here to assess the situations and see all the dilatated housing, they don't want to bring up part of their businesses here. So it spins off in several directions. So tonight what I'd like to do is to propose that the council consider a resolution. And I'll read it. I recommend the resolution be considered to specify the blight elimination administrative capability be identified and established to support the code enforcement office. We only have provisions for a blight elimination team. And this would be a complement to that. It would provide the office legwork and get the things organized and out to the operations people so we can get this thing moving. You know, an economic and time-saving way to get this thing going, so we don't have to deal with one time. We can package it and get contractors on there to work with us. I think there are a lot of ways that we can reduce the cost and get this thing going. So thank you very much.
All right. That brings us to number one, blight in our city, proposed action to be taken on this item. Let us reflect that.
I'll make a motion.
Adam, as his stand.
Oh, Mr. Stan.
All right. Proposed action to be taken on this item resolution to form a blight committee to address the blight problem in the city. We have to forward you a resolution. Try to draw, she want to.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass a resolution. Except we already have a committee upon the chairperson tonight to head that committee. My person I recommend was Mr. Jim Raymond, because he just spoke based on the information he had together voluntarily. Worked through our community, that's a good place to work with our current code enforcement, city government. I think we can all work together, network, you know, working together for one and make a good team with a committee. I'd recommend just Jim Raymond. I like that one. I mean, that's who's that chairman is that you?
Okay. This will be the Baskerville City Council designee, Mr. Brown, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
I want to make a motion since we, we got to be consistent in what we do and how we apply things. We just received this today, yesterday. Just like when you mayor, you bring up something at the last minute, we've got to be consistent. We say we have to table it until we do our research on it. So I recommend that we table this until we have a chance to look at it and do our due diligence. And to see what actually it is, because we haven't had time to research it. So, you know, we want to make it fair for everybody. We don't want to look like just when the mayor presented that we table it, we need to be consistent. As whether it's myself or anybody on this board or the mayor. So I respectfully ask this board to table it until the next meeting.
We have two motions on the floor.
That's what I was giving to you. Thank you, Mr. Bradford. We have a motion by Mr. Bradford. Is there a second?
I need to ask a question for clarity, because I'm just a little bit confused. Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Mrs. Chan.
So, who is on the blight elimination team?
So, you're, if I can try it real quick. The blight elimination teams in the Code Enforcement Reform Act, there's a blight elimination team that's designed to be a multi-agency task force team. It was put together and it would have, would have regular meetings to bring community members in. It is, and I'll read it to you. So there is a mayor's office designated, designated member from the mayor's office. There is a Baskerville Police Department designated, Malice Prairie Sheriff's Office designated, Baskerville City Code Enforcement designated, Baskerville City Council designated, Keep Morehouse Beautiful designated, District Commission designated, Planning and Zoning Commission designated, City Clerk designated person, Baskerville Fire Department designated, City Marshal designated person. It would be the members of this, it's supposed to be a multi-agency team, so that if you had questions about this, this is a fire hazard. And if you look at ten sixty-four, it talks about the responsibilities of the blight team members. It talks about that Code of Code Enforcement designated is to perform inspections. The city police department is responsible for the locations with, that deal with crimes, you know, what would be considered your, your disallowable places. And abandoned vehicles, the sheriff's office perform the code enforcement. They will talk with who has what they've done. And that was to bring in, at that time, Mr. McCain was doing it for the sheriff's office. There was something that he was getting some of them doing in different techniques. The goal and concept behind all of it, the fire department was there to inspect potential fire hazards. Exist from some of these old houses where we've had fires before, where they catch on fire. The concept was is to, and Keep Morehouse Beautiful was a civic organization to help align the civic interest with the city interest. So we didn't have it come out at these announcements meetings like that. That was the concept behind all this and have meetings. So there was, you know, I've talked to every council member. I said it from the day before I was ever voted on to be confirmed. Every person came to me and said, this is a problem or hasn't, this is what it is. This was to get people, the stakeholders in a room to have that dialogue outside of a council meeting. And what they have dialogue with council members and myself, I can say from my experience, I've had dialogue with multiple agencies groups. To have that dialogue in a room where everybody's having it together instead of individual and you're trying to remember, hey, this is what they talked about, this is their concerns. That was the concept behind it, was to put somebody in there so that there is an accountability team of what's going on, what's occurring, what these groups can do.
So that team hadn't been put together yet?
Has not been put together, but that team does exist in your ordinance. It's ten sixty through ten sixty, ten sixty seven.
That young Mr. Jones, you remember when I was asking about a board that was then still?
Yeah, and that's, we kind of got off last, last, last time we got off on the.
That's the board I was talking about, because you know, we talked about the sheriff department. Remember I told you I'm gonna find the board you're talking about?
Yes.
Well, you just brought it to my attention. That's the board we specifically referred to.
I have to find it.
You found it, remember I told you it was gonna be there?
Yes.
So you got different people there, you know, all of us could go back.
So do understand this.
Sheriff Department and different people, you remember, so you don't rely on them.
Yeah, so understand this. If we want to change membership of it, if we're getting the ground floor, tell me what the changes are, I can bring it to the March meeting, because we have to just amend the ordinance. We can change the membership, we can change whatever we need to change in it. It's just, I will be sure to email it out, as I've emailed out other things. I will email out that section of it for a look at it for changes. And Mr. Green is correct, and Mr. Jay Green, the district C is correct. When we talked about this initially, it was realized, we put it in, talked with the mayor's office about it when we were doing the ordinance, and that this would be a conceptual team to get in front of this. There was a discussion between Mr. Jay Green and I and the administration that we would probably be looking at some way to conform this. This was more of a placeholder to put it in, where would the membership come from, what would happen, how would it look? So that we don't overlap things, you know, we won't want to take planning and zoning spot, we also don't want to take the storeful spot. But how could you keep this to the forefront and have that dialogue that seemed like was lacking? I know that both the administration and council have, you know, wanted to have that dialogue between our outside civic groups and the administration, what can be done, especially grants. There's a lot of things that people offer in the public, how can they get to a point where we can vet all these things so we can be on the same page, other than in a meeting till ten o'clock?
Has anybody else been appointed from any other departments yet?
No, largely. Largely since this has been enacted, that would be the first appointment.
And we can always, we do always have a right to amend and add.
Yeah.
This is just a first step.
Yeah, so if you, if you wanted to look at it and table it till you got time to decide what your membership want to be, you can do that. And if I'm not mistaken, the mayor had a spot, the clerk had a spot, and somebody else had a spot. It was like three or four different spots within the district. And the mayor's office has a, has a spot, the Baskerville Police Department's spot, the sheriff's office's spot, the city code enforcement's spot, the city council's spot, Keep Morehouse Beautiful's spot, the District Commission has a spot, Planning and Zoning has a spot, City Clerk has a spot. The design behind City Clerk is because you have somebody with record there, it doesn't have to be the City Clerk, it can be somebody else who can answer those questions on behalf of, bring that to the discussion. And then the Baskerville Fire Department and the City Marshals' office.
Well, does the council have the right to appoint one person?
Correct, correct.
Okay, we all have a spot, and I all have an obligation to move this project forward. We may, all right, interrupt you now, hold on a minute. We all have the right to move this project forward. I mean, we always go back and amend. I mean, each one of these departments here, we can either eliminate, the council has a power to eliminate, or add. By being council, section ten sixty-four give us operation to eliminate team, to eliminate team as well. But like I said, for us to keep kicking this can down the road, and I presume we don't be anything done with being the next year, the year after next, was the same bright problem we have. This was just, and we have a committee. This is just a point in chairman that, who have the obligation from the chairman, of my understanding would be the all.
There's no chairman in this committee, it's, it's more of an action committee.
Action committee.
And so there's no chairman's spot in there particularly. It's an action committee together to have that thing, there is a stated purpose forth and the design behind it down in sixty-five. If you, here's, here's the reality, if you, if you appoint somebody tonight, there's no terms on these things. It's just at the will of the council or the appointments.
So we need to create terms, we need to.
We need to look at some aspects of it. It was just, it was roughed in for the purpose of that, the whole design behind Code Enforcement was act, was not really that avenue, but it was to be a placeholder to give us somewhere to go.
Okay, well, my motion to stand, if you want to take a vote on it or not, and I just want to, let me amend my motion. I'd like to make a motion, we're upon a chairman, a, a, a point is committed in action with a necessary amendment. That we move on, then we make the necessary amendment, that we go. We gotta, we gotta initiate it somewhere. It's been in the charter for a while, we have initiated and we still have a problem. We have citizens in this community willing to volunteer at that time, I think we should have taken advantage of that, you know, to go ahead, councilments and leaders of the community, the government body. And we got members in the community willing to volunteer at that time, I think we should act on it. I think everybody know the condition, not you.
For clarity, there was a motion, was there a second?
No.
So I would call for a second on, on his motion, see if there's a second.
All right, Mr. Bradford has restated his motion, is there a second?
What's your motion again, Mr. Bradford?
I'm sorry?
What's your motion again?
Motion to go ahead and get the committed action and make a necessary amendment that we go appoint people to these positions and just name the following position that everyone can point someone from. But let's make one step. Let's get this community to one step.
Is a motion to appoint Mr. Raymond?
Yeah, 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 appoint Mr. Raymond.
Point him to what position?
Mr. Raymond, he been working volunteer in the community, helped.
I point him to appointment as the designated blight team member for the city council.
I got point of information.
Is that correct, Mr. Bradford?
Yeah, 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 that is bad. We know.
Well, let's see, let's, let's see where we get with a second.
I just want a point of information.
We'll hear, we'll hear. So we can mean quick.
All right, okay, well, this is the board that I've been looking for, that was, we didn't, this is the board that we didn't really approve. It was added in, that's what I keep coming back to.
It was in the original, we just never took it out.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I kept saying, we kept, when we looked it over, I said, we didn't, we probably didn't really want this. It may be a good thing, but you remember that? And this is what I kept saying, this is a board that you're supposed to been reconstructed, because we really weren't on the same page as this. So why would we vote on something that this is what I've been looking for, for the last six months?
And that's, and that is correct, it wasn't added in, but what it was, was when we originally did it, we'd gone through many versions, and the versions that came out that we voted on, we had, you yourself and I had talked about taking it out. And when it came time for the vote that night, just of all the things we were doing.
And we can add it, it's still open for amendment, right?
It's still open to be amended.
We can add it, add it and take away.
But I think at this point, yes, it's your point of information, yes. We, this is the one that we discussed about removing that night when we voted, it just slipped me, slipped you, and it slipped there. So what we, I just asked for a second. Is there a second?
Well, I'm still, because this motion was the first to appoint.
He is the appointer, right?
Now, is to activate the board, it's already established.
It's already activated, it's just a motion to appoint as the council designee.
Designee person to have. We want to appoint a chairman, they have to appoint a chairman.
So right now you appoint a spot for speaking for the council?
No, 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 for the whole, I definitely.
It's just the design, each, the council has a designated member on the blight team.
So it's gonna be designated for District B?
Yeah, I'm designated.
Designated for the council as a whole.
Not for a whole?
So, so that's one thing that may need to be spelled out, we need to break out different districts, and you have each district have a member.
Yeah.
So I call, I call for a second, see if there's a second.
Okay, yes, Mr. Bradford's motion.
Looks like it does for.
Okay. And this motion by Mr. Green.
Okay, uh, I think, I think, are you rescinding anything you didn't amend?
No, sir.
Okay, so this, that moves on to the next one.
But hold on, hold on, we, we still have to put in place what we're able to appoint somebody for each district.
I might have to bring that amendment to the whole meeting. Well, I'm gonna bring it to the, I'm gonna bring it to March meeting for it.
Because you can't amend an ordinance, it's two steps.
All right, that just brings us to number two. The track team proposed action to be taken on this item resolution to reinstate the track program exception that all donations for track team placed in a separate account to be used by a track team.
I thought, I thought we, we never removed the track program, so why are we reinstating track?
Why are they reinstating it, it's the same, for some reason.
Yeah.
Well, I think that needs to be tabled as well, because that resolution that we refer to here in this week tonight, it's the previous resolution, resolution that we already, we already said, we did sign and we did approve number last month, the signature was CB.
Yeah, the signatures are just the vote that was taken at that time.
I like to make that move to tape and move. I'm sure it will take.
I see that.
Okay. We moved in second to tape, all in favor?
And I'll reproduce, and the next, and the next thing I'll reproduce the entire, I was just on that rate.
This brings us to number three, clarification on our request to have Ms. Laura Hart appear, proposed action to be taken on this item. How was the eligibility determined, how was the amount obtained determined, is Hart's, I believe he held a letter.
She gave the letter, I can very quickly comment on this one at this time, that I guess our, of course, who established the rules and how's the building is what a requirement of the receiving of the, who established that? I think the, the, the county, the municipality, I think you used to work with the municipality, she would have had something to do with the requirement. That this never came before the municipality. But I did speak at the, at the previous meeting with Mr. Tom Pateo about what do we do if this occurs, that some employees would come forward and say they feel that they're eligible, and they, they proved that they're eligible during that period of time, how would we handle that situation? That's, well, how would it be handled? I guess, but we never did establish. I think the court said, this is the deadline, and we said, well, wouldn't be fair, whether these founders come from the Mr. Pittler or someone would show up here at city hall and say, well, I was eligible, we, we just, we got to come up with some type of solution to compensate computers, they follow the eligibility determine. And again, we're not quite sure eligibility, because the council had nothing to do with establishing this eligibility according to the A R P rule. We, we, we're not having input on, on the A R P rule. We had no input on the establishing, how it would go by the established eligibility. And I mean, this was done pretty solo by, by the mayor and Ms. Hart. And Ms. Hart stated herself, she received that information from the mayor. Well, according to the rule, the A R P rule, the municipality should have had something, the council should have had something to do with the establishment. I spoke with her briefly, and she, she replied, yeah, you may be right, but this is a cutoff thing. Well, I said, that wouldn't be fair to other people, now I'm gonna do the time. I, I think we have a current, you know, make a current motion for all city employees who was employed for the, for the, for the left and designation of designated A R P time period between October twenty-first, October twenty-second, December twenty-second, be, be compensated immediately, if they, if they was employed during that time, and it had to come from the juror firm. We can't even, Mr. Pittler, who was eligible, just throwing to the side of Ms. Johnson or Ms. Smith, whoever they be, just throwing to the side, they were eligible. That's something, I make a, make a motion, if anyone who's through eligibility, they need paid immediately from the juror firm.
And I would wish to buy this last meeting, that we receive a list for those people that were like right at the cutoff or were eliminated and did not get their benefits based on whatever reason. And we as council still have not received that list. If we had that list, we definitely have something to go on. We don't have anything, we have to have something, so we can see what people qualify, and then.
Okay, a list or an email? For just say that.
Email?
Email it.
And it had on the list, those people that did not qualify to say that they qualified?
It was an email that was sent out, it said, everybody that received it and everybody that, that was working during that time period.
Well, that criteria made about who could get it and who not. That, that's, that's the. Why were these people not on the original list? That's, that's the question, I need that, that's on the guy. Why, why were they not on the list? If they qualified, just like every other officer or city employee, why were these people left off?
So, so the list that you sent was people that was qualified and, and received the pay? Ms. Hart got a list of, I, I see a list that I received, this, this she sent out, this is the list that, everybody that was eligible. Ms. Hart got a list of everybody that was paid and excluded. So I would recommend, I would recommend that she supply the council with the, with the list, or she appear in person.
I would like to know why they were left off.
So, uh, to, to explain it, Hart had an eligibility pool that was wide, that said you could pay up to these people. Then it left each municipality with the ability to define up to that limit of the people that wanted to get paid.
So you say left up to municipality?
It was left up to municipality.
If the municipality had, we could put them.
Wait, it's still not filed, I need to see the criteria for the people that was on the list and why those people were left off. Get something.
And I think there's a one-page letter from Ms. Hart regarding that.
And that's take why they were left off. I think, I think Ms. Hart, I feel that the student is not right, she says she's based on the person who submitted to her. And then I tell you, again, as Ms. Patterson, I feel we should have known when that money was dispersed, we should have known the criteria. The county, I say, we have to think of the council, we all should have known that. And like I say, that list haven't been turned to councilmen on tap, and I don't think I have received it either. Have you seen the screen, Mr. Green, Jay Green?
I've seen, I've received two, uh, two, one of them was the exclusion and one was the inclusion.
Can we get a printed list, not an email list, a printed list given to us?
One year?
Uh, okay, we'll, we'll get that information before he adds the question. Now, thank God hell is probably where needed to.
Expand the agenda, Mr. Green or?
Yeah, expand the agenda for.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the agenda to, uh, to District D, I mean, to get D, the government, cooperation in government agreement?
And also, and as well as seeing about purchasing some items for softball and baseball.
I don't think you have to do that to a point.
No, I just want to see the process.
In, in the process, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any public comments as it relates to Whispering Time, C E A, or the purchasing of baseball or softball equipment? I don't hear any, mayor, I believe the comments period's closed at this point. Uh, it'd be a full vote for the council.
All right.
What about the other thing, why didn't you include that?
I'm not talking about it.
I'm back in the corner.
What was other thing?
You expanded the agenda for three things, right?
Two. To see why the process of purchasing items with my A R P fund for softball, baseball, as well as, because softball and baseball is coming up, as well as basketball, that's what I can add.
Yeah.
I mean, about corporate endeavor.
Yes, that was for the cooperative endeavor, the C, the C E A for Whispering Time. Cooperative endeavor, C E A.
Uh, Mr. Jay Green, this is, here's the thing that you want to talk about.
Uh, Whispering Time, this running, was running up with, uh, the, is the chairperson? You, you come, I'm briefly, we got.
And to bring the council to things, we previously heard from Mr. Edwards that they were requesting some funds to clear land at the cemetery and bring it into compliance with the location ordinances, and it was a sum of money that was sent to Councilman Dee Green, which was forwarded immediately requested, in total about twelve thousand dollars. Please, Mr. Dee Green agreed with him that he would be willing from his art funds to dedicate two thousand dollars to that money. I placed that into a C E A that would meet the bill as test and everything, to try and fast track where we've been and where we are.
Okay, go ahead, just take your name and address, please.
My name is Ryan Edwards, sixteen oh nine Hoover Avenue in Baskerville. I just wanted to come up and thank the council for taking the time to review and consider our request. As you know, we are renovating the Whispering Pass Cemetery in Martin Luther King South. If you haven't been down there, go by and take a look. The last week or two weeks has been remarkable improvements, remarkable progress in terms of cemetery. That's why our goal is to finish cleaning the cemetery in that way between now and the early part of spring, to pull all of the grass and weeds start growing back. So we really do support, appreciate your support, and we look forward to continuing to help the city to get rid of the blight that's been talked about here.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, sir. At this time, I would.
Make that motion, sir.
I said, and second, any questions? All in favor? In opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes our meeting, so we can make it to the chamber then, with the honor committee, or to recognize and consider them as well as a police department. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I said.
Well, y'all don't want to fight the blight in this community, you putting up too many roadblocks. Y'all, if y'all knew about a committee that was already together, where have that committee been? Y'all still ain't doing nothing, y'all don't want to do nothing, just like, y'all just kicking the can down the road. When is y'all gonna get serious and do something about it?